Item D2 is a briefing to update the Board of Supervisors on the Roanoke County Pipeline Advisory Committee. We have with us Richard Kaywood, our Assistant County Administrator, David Perry, who is the Chairman of the Roanoke County Pipeline Advisory Committee, and our County Attorney Paul Mahoney. Gentlemen, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We're going to do a presentation in three parts today with the three different folks you just introduced there. First, County Attorney is going to go over some of the legal issues and questions that the Board has raised at recent meetings. Then I'm going to go over the FERC Notice of Intent that's included in your packet. And then finally, David Perry is going to give an update on the activities of the committee, as well as some recommendations from the committee. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mahoney.
At the Board's direction, the County Attorney's Office has begun a review of the various legal issues involved in this natural gas pipeline application. I'd like to compliment Senior Assistant County Attorney Ruth Ellen Canel. Ms. Canel has been my office's primary liaison with the Citizens Pipeline Committee. She has also done a substantial amount of legal research, of reading various federal cases involved in other pipeline situations, reviewing the FERC process, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission processes. And both she and I have also discussed these legal issues with many of our local government attorney counterparts around the Commonwealth of Virginia to see how other jurisdictions are handling these kinds of issues. At the bottom line, much of the federal case law involved in this kind of regulatory proceeding indicates that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has the primary regulatory authority over these kinds of applications. Federal government, the U.S. Congress, has adopted the Natural Gas Act. That federal legislation, in large measure, preempts a lot of state and local laws and regulations with respect to the siting, the location, the construction, the operation of these kinds of facilities. One of the leading cases that we've looked at is this Dominion Transmission versus the town of Myersville. Town of Myersville is located in Maryland. And back in 2013, they, the town council denied a land use application for a compressor station. A compressor station is one of these stations that kind of just keeps pushing the natural gas through the pipeline. And you have to locate compressor stations all along the pipeline to keep the natural gas moving. I can bore you with a lot of detail of the case, but the bottom line is the Dominion Transmission folks went to federal court and were able to, in effect, circumvent the town council's zoning or land use denial. I had thought that the town had a pretty good argument because one of the requirements under Maryland law required that the Maryland Environmental Agency had to issue a clean air permit for the compressor station, because compressor stations put stuff up in the atmosphere. And one of the requirements under Maryland state law was that that state environmental agency had to show that there was compliance with local zoning and land use regulations. And so we really thought that maybe this was a case that we could hang our hat on. As the Board may understand, one of the alternative routes that is being proposed by MVP also includes a compressor station in Roanoke County. If you look at the map that is included in your materials, one of the compressor station possible locations is in Montgomery County. One of the other locations, if alternate route, is located in Roanoke County. I also believe, I think, maybe one or two weeks ago, or one or two meetings ago, Mr. Bedrosian had raised a question with respect to some other permitting authority that local governments have, whether it's under stormwater or erosion and sediment control. And it's one of the other elements that we're reviewing now because, under the county code, we talk about both inter- and intra-state natural gas pipeline companies, as well as railroad companies. They have to file a general erosion and sediment control specifications with State Soil and Conservation Board, it's the old State Water Control Board, for review and comment. So we were thinking, this has many of the same parallels that we had in the Maryland litigation. Again, one of the federal cases that we reviewed, I think it's out of Iowa, either Iowa or Illinois, indicated that there was a challenge by a local government because a natural gas pipeline did not comply with the ENS and the stormwater regulations and ordinances that that locality had. The response that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission said, "Well, in our final order, when we granted a certificate of public necessity for this pipeline, also included in that final order were fairly detailed and specific requirements that the natural gas company had to follow with respect to seeding and buffering and all of the other requirements that go along with erosion and sediment control kind of issues." Let's go to our next slide. So that's kind of a negative point of view, but at the same time, in reviewing a lot of the commission orders, and also specifically looking at some of those orders where the commission has denied an application for a pipeline of this type, there is a viable alternative to attempt to influence that pipeline project at a local level. Mr. Kaywood will mention some of those possible avenues of approach in one of the next slides coming up. But I still think there is an opportunity for local governments to attempt to influence those pipeline decisions, an opportunity to influence maybe routes that are followed or chosen for that kind of approach. And at the same time, there's opportunities to challenge the FERC decision on some of the criteria that Mr. Kaywood is going to show you in a subsequent slide. And I think there is, that there are opportunities for challenges to that process. But I think we have to be careful because, in many times, those approaches by local governments have not necessarily succeeded in stopping or halting or rejecting a pipeline, but rather changing the location of that pipeline. And I think one of the concerns you may have is that it may move it from my property, but it's going to move it to your property. And so I don't know if that necessarily is a positive response. I think there are opportunities where we can mitigate some of those environmental challenges, those public safety challenges. We can mitigate some of the adverse impacts that flow from the construction and development of these kind of pipelines. So I think we do have some avenues that are legitimate approaches that we can take. One of the issues, I think, we are looking at a tremendous amount of information that's out there. I know Ms. Canel, she's only signed up for the FERC site for the last week or two, and she's probably receiving over 60-plus emails a day of various kind of comments that are coming in from interested citizens, from different groups and different organizations, raising objections to various environmental issues, whether it's karst or wetlands or water supply issues. So I think we do have some issues that we would have to face, the Board would have to face, if we want to participate in this process, both short-term, what's coming up in the next week or two, and then also long-term. If you look at, from what we've been told, the formal application will be filed with FERC sometime in October. And as you get into things like intervenor status and other regulatory or judicial challenges, you're looking at a process where you're probably going to have to spend some significant amount of money for experts to address these various issues and to assist us, to assist the county, to assist the Citizens Pipeline Committee as we go forward to try to put, put before the commission those legitimate concerns that we can utilize to try to mitigate adverse impacts. With that, Richard.
What I'll cover is some details out of the notice of intent to file the environmental, or prepare the environmental impact statement. I sent this to the Board, I guess it was Friday before last when we received this from FERC, but they issued their notice on April 17th. And what they're doing with that is really opening the formal FERC process on the pipeline, both the public comment and also for, I guess, MVP to ultimately prepare the environmental impact statement for them to review. They also announced the public hearing dates. And the public hearing that's closest to us is going to be on May 5th at 7:00 PM at Eastern Montgomery High School in Elliston. And we'll talk a little bit more about that toward the end of the presentation. Also, another recent note that I sent to the Board, but I just want to highlight it tonight. On May 23rd, we received notice that MVP was starting the process of trying to initiate what I might call involuntary survey on people's land. So if you remember, quite some months ago, they sent out notices to citizens, I think back in the fall of last year, seeking voluntary permission to survey. And now they are initiating a process to try to seek the right to go on people's land who have denied them that permission. And from what they're telling us, they're going to send out certified mailings as early as next week indicating their desire to do that. One thing I want to kind of focus the Board's attention on, and really the public's as well, is in the FERC Notice of Intent, they describe the different areas that they consider when they're looking at review of the project. Because I think the natural tendency is for a citizen, or if I was affected myself, is to say, "No, I don't want it here because it crosses my property, or I just don't like the idea of the pipeline." Unfortunately, that's not really something they look at in their review process. They look at these specific areas that you'll see on the screen, the geology and soils, water resources, which has been a significant concern in our area, vegetation and wildlife, cultural resources, land use issues, air quality and noise, what they call cumulative impacts, which is more than one of these, and then public safety. So one thing we're doing as a committee, and I would also share with the public, is to try to frame comments that folks might make to FERC in one of these categories that they specifically are going to be looking at. Then the other guidance they give to us when we make comments is to describe the environmental impact, talk about reasonable alternatives or measures to lessen that impact, to be specific. And then there's a key date adhered, in addition to the public hearing next week. The public comment on what they call scoping is open through June 16th, which is really our deadline to have the most influence in the process at this stage. So that's going to be an important date for the Pipeline Committee and also for staff. They also listed some elements that they had already received comments on regarding the project, and these are many of the concerns that we have locally. Karst terrain being at the top of the list, which is a significant concern. With the next item, which is the water sources, the impact on forested land. And that's one that probably makes this pipeline a little different than some of the ones that are in the Midwest. Just because you can't reforest over the pipeline, it's going to be more visible in our area. The threatened endangered species, the National Register properties, and impacts to the Appalachian Trail and Blue Ridge Parkway. Also, concerns about property values, tourism, emergency response and public safety, noise from the compressor stations, and then the alternates and their impacts. And again, these are just straight out of the FERC document. At that point, I'm going to turn the, at this point, turn the mic over to David Perry, and he's going to talk about how the committee would recommend that we respond to some of the items you just talked.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. I do want to say that we have a, or that you all assembled, a very good committee full of very qualified, concerned individuals. And a couple of them, at least, are here this afternoon. Louise Garmen is here, and A.J. Phillips is here as well. Okay, and Roberta Bondurat is here, okay. So there are a few members here. I've been elected chairperson of the committee. I also want to compliment the county staff, Ruth Ellen Canel, Susan McCoy, Philip Thompson, and Richard Kaywood. They've been consummate professionals and extremely helpful throughout this entire process, helping us understand the scope of what we're supposed to do in making facilities and lunch and different things like that available to us. So we have met four times now. We have another meeting scheduled for Monday. Typically, we meet every two weeks. We've been, we met in extra time this past week just because of the sensitive timelines involved. We have had citizen comment over the website and also at the meetings as well. We've had an open comment period. We do have a list of environmental concerns and comments that has been assembled by Richard and his staff as a result of these submissions from the public and from the committee members. And it's a work in progress. The meeting is a week away, and I believe you, they have a draft copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, so. Just some of the highlights of some of the things that have been brought to the committee's attention. Spring Hollow, of course, very important source of drinking water for the valley as part of the Western Virginia Water Authority. Well water and the impact of the proposed pipeline on karst topography. You never know, when you drill a hole in one place, what it'll do to someone else's water miles away with the way the geology is here. Impacts to Camp Roanoke. I believe the routing is taking it right through Camp Roanoke. View sheds and watershed to some of our more prominent mountains, Poor Mountain, Bent Mountain, Brush Mountain, and over in the Catawba Valley. Number of endangered species. We have endangered mussels here. We have, of course, the Roanoke River log perch, pirate bush, which is found in very few spots in the world. And there's a collection of it on Poor Mountain. So it's a very ecologically sensitive place, and it could be impacted by the pipeline. Impacts on the Roanoke River and the Roanoke River Greenway, and then all the resources that the county and the other neighboring jurisdictions have placed into making the river and the greenway something for the public to enjoy. Current route of the pipelines also proposed to go across property owned by the landfill, which was, I believe, purchased through eminent domain for the express purpose of a landfill and nothing else. So we do have a number of recommendations that we wanted to share with the Board of Supervisors and sort of get some feedback from you all as to how you'd like us to proceed. There are six meetings planned along the entire length of the proposed pipeline from northern West Virginia through Chatham, over in Pennsylvania County. I think what FERC did is try to disperse these out geographically. Unfortunately, the people aren't dispersed out geographically. And there are four meetings in West Virginia, only two in Virginia, but the overwhelming majority of people are in Virginia. And of that, most people are here in the Roanoke Valley or they're in the New River Valley. So we are recommending that we have additional meetings, have a meeting in Roanoke County, certainly, or in the city of Roanoke or the city of Salem, but somewhere in the valley that's accessible. The amount of time allocated for speakers at these meetings is also very limited. I'm sure you all can imagine there have been hundreds and thousands of people who have expressed concern about this pipeline. And given that it's a first-to-sign-up, first-to-speak format at the meeting, the meeting will be three hours long. We anticipate that only about 75 people will be able to speak. And you hear through the grapevine about events that have taken place elsewhere, where other companies proposing pipelines have sort of stacked the deck, so to speak, put people in line, bright and early, to get there, and not give people on both sides of the issue a chance to speak. And we hope that won't happen on Tuesday in Elliston, but you never know with these things. We would also recommend sending the same information to our elected officials, Senators Warner and Kane, and then Bob Goodlatte and Morgan Griffith as well. Even though FERC is supposed to be an independent body, there's really no one else, as far as an elected official, that we can seek any kind of recourse with. We'd also like to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they're, that we ask for a 90-day extension of the public comment period. You know, I think the meetings were announced with about two and a half weeks' notice, which to me is very, very short. That should have been at least 30, if not 60 or 90 days' notice. But I think, you know, 17, 18 days is a little short. People have been notified that the pipeline may have come across their property only really very recently, as recently as February. That was sort of the second round of routes that were released by Mountain Valley. Whereas other people have known since late summer, early fall, that this pipeline might be coming across their property. So we have a whole new batch of people that have been impacted, who are angry, scared, frightened, confused, may have thrown the letter in the mail, and don't even know. But they haven't had, we feel, adequate time to digest this and come up with a response, whether that's citizens, whether that's non-governmental organizations, whether that's local government. And as Richard, Mr. Kaywood alluded, there is a lot of documentation coming down the pipeline, so to speak. I'm sorry for saying that. If there's one thing I wasn't going to say, it was to make that pun, but there I've done it. But there's a lot of information that comes to us, and it's a lot to digest. It's hard enough for the existing county staff. This is, you know, they're not the pipeline staff. They're your administrative staff, they're your legal staff. But it's hard enough for them to add this to their existing workload. But the committee that I'm chairing, we're all volunteers. And so for us, it's especially difficult to take the time to read this large volume of material. I like to think I'm a fairly intelligent person, reasonably intelligent person, but it's oftentimes difficult to understand. And I think that's probably true of everybody on the committee. You know, everybody there is, it's a pretty sharp bunch. And I think sometimes, you know, we're not pipeline experts. And a recommendation that we have is that some kind of company outside, maybe a consulting firm, be brought in to assist with understanding and digesting this material. It might be a company that, in any other circumstance, might be engaged by a pipeline company to do these kinds of reports, but it would instead be engaged by Roanoke County to help us digest these reports because they're in the business of making them. And that would help kind of separate the wheat from the chaff. That would help boil down this large quantity of material that we're all getting and trying to make sense of. And we'd also recommend, this is something that was done up in Augusta County, that the county consider putting the pipeline through a mock rezoning process. So if this were something over which the county had complete control, what would the, you know, what would the final outcome be? What would the things be that the county would look at as far as locations and, you know, impacts on zoning and rezoning and all those sorts of things? If it were just, you know, a shopping center going in, or a road going through, or something like that? But that was very useful in Augusta County because it sort of provided them with a lot of answers to questions, provided them with some of the detail that they needed to be able to make intelligent decisions moving forward about the impact of the pipeline. In this case, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, which is being put forth by Dominion Power on their community. So again, we'd like to thank you all for, you know, creating this committee and providing the, really, the broader public, not just the Roanoke County public, but the broader public in the valley, an opportunity to come together, gather information, advise the Board of Supervisors. Again, we've had excellent participation from the volunteers on the committee. And I think we've had good feedback from the public as well, and hope to get more of that, as more people become aware that they can comment on the website, come to the meetings, make comments, and so on, so.
With that, we'd be happy to take any questions that the Board would have of us.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have one question, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Richard, you spoke earlier, and I've heard a lot of talk about the noise from these compression stations. Is there a decibel level that it's going to put off? I mean, what noise are we to expect from that?
I can see what I can find out about the exact level of decibels that they create. I do know that they are very loud, and I know that for two reasons. One, in our meetings with MVP, they are seeking a 100-acre site, of which they would only develop 10 acres to use the surrounding land as a buffer, because, partially because of the noise, also there's safety considerations. But also, in some of my research, I found that in more urban areas, they often put them in an enclosed building to provide soundproofing. Because essentially, just from, you know, what they are, they're essentially like a diesel locomotive engine that runs off natural gas that does the pumping. So if you could picture something that's the volume of a train, I think that's relatively comparable. So that's something that I, we can give some, a more detailed update to the Board in the future, and also have a little video we could show you of just some compressor stations around the country.
I'd like to turn it over to the gentleman from Catawba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in no particular order. David, I want to thank you for your participation, and as Chair. The last time I think I saw you was the Delveer up in Catawba. Maybe it's a couple hundred people or more. It was IC, and we had a huge turnout. And I want to thank Louise for showing up, and Roberta Bondurat, Louise Garmen, and A.J. You folks are very important to participate. This issue has kind of come to us slanting downhill, that's my opinion, from the get-go. We had the officials here on the first row asking, "Why is this Board being told by local citizens that you're in the area?" And we knew nothing about it. Realizing we don't make the decision, it was just out of courtesy to the local governing body. We thought that would be proper. Well, I'm going to try to be short, but they told us, "We'll do better. We'll change that." Well, lo and behold, they did not. They did exactly the same thing again, putting tags on gates and parcels of land out in the Catawba Valley and other parts of my district. Those that are in the valley know that I've got, our district's 125 square miles. It's huge, big enough to put Salem City and Roanoke City inside of it twice, two and a half times. So they've got a lot of places to roam. And I'm glad you mentioned, Richard, about the 100 acres. I did know that the stations, it's not just a couple acres. We're talking about a huge amount of land. For all the reasons that you illustrated on the PowerPoint, we probably qualify for almost all of them in some way, shape, or form. So I've had a lot of talk with a lot of people that are talking about, "Well, we don't want to have it not in my backyard, but we don't want it really in any part of another local area in Roanoke County or surrounding counties." Because it's, in my opinion, and I think a lot of the people who have delved into the process, there's not been supportive information that, number one, it's an economic benefit. We've been told or shown information that it's just the opposite. We've known in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and West Virginia that there are problems. They have leaks and some explosions. The trail, it's easy to make an economic statement, but the proof would be in the pudding. I've had a lot of people telling me that, you know, what you mentioned, David, that EQT and MVP, they're overwhelming the people with information. This Board cannot possibly understand and read through and digest the mountains of information that, is it by design? Who knows? But it's overwhelming. You mentioned a few things that I am totally in favor of, David, and your group. Number one, no local meetings. I did find it odd that there's not something locally when most of the activity is locally. The independent body of FERC, and I've never been told, how did they end up being the decision-maker? I guess that's a rhetorical question. But who put them in charge of the goal, so to speak? It's like the local governing body, you can make comments, we can give an opinion, but they're kind of going to the back room and said, "Okay, here's our decision." And that's not an illustration of local government participation, in my opinion. The 90-day extension of public comment, I think that's minimal. The 90-day extension of public comment, I think that's minimal. Everything has been a slow process and then a quick process. If you followed it, that's the montage, it's slow, slow, and all of a sudden, hey, we're ready to file. And that bothers me as a citizen, and especially as a board member. I have a feeling that this next step of involuntary, I call it encroachment, or however you want to call it, is just another obstacle that's going to upset the people, is going to be a obstruction to try to mitigate, to discuss, to come to some sort of understanding. It's like, do you understand us? Well, you won't let us come on, so now we're going to come on. And that process really bothers me as an elected official. I just think that, for lots and lots of reasons, but from the get-go, when we've got a large organization, LLC, that sometimes can leave a state or a region, and who knows what happens? You know, we're not talking about a corner grocery store, folks, we're talking about a huge swap of land coming through states. We're not talking about something that, if adversity happens or something fails there, it's not something you can pack up in a U-Haul trailer and move on. This is a very serious situation. So, when the time comes, I don't know what, I think this is just a briefing, Mr. Chairman, but I'm in favor of the process, David, that you outlined, and Richard Kaywood, and Paul, thank you for getting the information to us in a timely manner. And Ruth Ellen Cornell, I know you're back there, thank you for your participation. This is not a small item, folks, this is huge. This is that big bear that feels like it can sleep anywhere. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Recognize the gentleman from Windsor Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Kaywood, page 14, you refer to the proposed locations for compressor station in our areas not well-defined, in Montgomery County and the potential Roanoke County have not been defined at all, other than vague mile markers. I thought a recent filing did not have Roanoke County with a compressor station.
Okay, this is where there's a lot of confusion. The best map I've actually seen is what's in your packet that came out with the Notice of Intent from FERC, and it actually shows dots on the map for a potential compressor in Roanoke County. That's the first I've ever seen of that on a map. In the very earliest filings that we had from MVP back in the fall of last year, they were referencing a mile marker location, I believe it, I'm doing this from memory, was 224, which put it just over the Montgomery County line into Roanoke County at Elliston. The more recent filings are talking about, I believe it's 220.5, which is a spot that's just on the other side of the county line in Montgomery County, is the, I guess, the preferred location, they're calling this the Swan Compressor Station. But on this map that is in your packet that came from FERC, it shows two alternate dots, both in the northern Catawba area, kind of in the Gravel Hill Road area, just, they're kind of, just not real high-resolution imagery. And when we have asked MVP for more information about the locations of potential compressor stations, what we're being told at this point, just that they're exploring multiple options, and that's about the level of detail that we get. But clearly, what this shows me is that if the alternate route is used, that it goes through the Catawba area more completely than the original, that there would be a compressor station in the northern part of the county, just below the Craig County line. So, that's why I say it's vague, whereas if you look on the map, that the northern two compressor stations already have a definitive location nailed down, the third one still shows two alternates with one that's pretty tightly nailed down, and when you look in the MVP filings, they give detailed descriptions for the first three. But then, when you get to the last one, that's in our, in the southern part of the corridor in our area, there's just a vague paragraph saying, we're still looking at that, and we'll tell you more later when we do our formal filing, presumably the one that's in October. So, my concern that I was trying to articulate in the slide is, because there's so much less certainty and less information on our end of the corridor, it really puts us in a disadvantaged position when it comes to reviewing and commenting on the compressor, when nobody's ever identified a location for any of the three spots you see on the southern part of the corridor, when for all three of the northern ones, they have a definitive location where somebody could drive out and look at it, and we just don't have that information here.
Thank you. The recommendations from the Pipeline Advisory Committee, are these recommendations that the Pipeline Advisory Committee voted on? Is it kind of just consensus from discussion? How did these recommendations?
We had a vote yesterday. It was in the form of, are there any objections? And hearing none, we'll recommend this list to the Board of Supervisors. So, there was ample time for discussion in meetings and over email over the past few weeks.
And I guess, thank you, and this question to Mr. Mahoney, if we wanted to act on some of the recommendations from the Pipeline Advisory Committee, is it something we can direct staff, or do we have to take them, do we have to vote on a motion?
Well, I would suggest perhaps a motion, and let staff prepare that motion. One of the approaches I would recommend, if the board wants to go down this path, is with a formal vote, and let's say staff can put that into a resolution format, that's one more document that we can submit as part of the FERC process. So, I'm trying to think of, how can we build a record? How can we build part of that, that public comment period as part of the scoping process? And I think that, when we have a resolution of the local governing body, I hope that that speaks louder. And so, that's just one more, one more piece of evidence, one more document that we can put into place. A second part is, I think, from a staff perspective, we don't know yet who we could recommend to the board, if it's the board's wish, to perhaps retain as an outside expert to assist us in this. And I think that's some, that's some work that we and the county administrator would have to do. At this point, unfortunately, we're still playing catch-up, and we're still trying to find out who we could even call to try to help us with this kind of approach. And I think the third point is initiative from the board, because we can reallocate a lot of staff people to this project, but that means you're going to be taking it, taking those staff people off of other things. And so, we'd like that to be something that we could plan through with Mr. Kaywood and Mr. Gates, but again, bottom line, I'd recommend a resolution of the board that we could try to put together, maybe put that at your next meeting, and then we can, at the very least, we can then use that as a talking point. Our problem is, we have a May 5 date, and so, when county staff goes to speak at that Elliston meeting, obviously, we won't have that resolution. So, I guess what I'm hearing is, we're going to get direction from the board so that staff can repeat some of these items at that May 5 meeting, but also, I think, in the long run, definitely before June 16, I'd really recommend a nice resolution, because that's one more piece of evidence that we're submitting as part of that FERC process.
Okay. That answers my question well. I think, you know, when you look at these recommendations, why would we not have as part of the recommendation that if there is a compressor station, it'd be housed internal to a building? You know, if they're doing it other places, why shouldn't we at least request that they're doing it here?
And I think that's an excellent recommendation, and certainly something that, you know, I would probably recommend to you that we bring that up with the, at the committee, and just come back with probably even more extensive comments on the compressor. Quite frankly, one of the reasons that we have not discussed that extensively yet is, it's still so vague as to whether or not we have one and where, because I think a lot of our comments about a potential compressor would be based on, first, is it in the county, but then even where is it proposed, and what's the parcel look like? So, I think that also feeds into that argument of, it's very difficult to comment on something that's hypothetical, and that does put us in a bad position.
But in every scenario, it's enclosed, it's in a better situation.
I think that one's easy, and I think we would have additional comments on the compressor as well.
Thank you. Just one final question, when you talk about bringing in outside staff, it'd be my opinion, when you have an engaged, engaged legal team that's been involved with this for the last three, four, five months, I don't know that you're going to find that same team sitting on the shelf in Roanoke. So, now you're going to be going somewhere else to someone that has fought this in the past, or whatever. And I kind, and I almost think that, I would, be my preference that we use our engaged staff that's already engaged, and is already many steps down the road as far as from an understanding standpoint, and has been involved from the process, I think they have the expertise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I need, I want clarification real quick, and then I'll, you're saying that for the compressor station, they have to purchase or receive 100 acres?
They indicated that to us verbally, as that would be their desired size of parcel. I know they have been built on smaller parcels, but that's, they said that's what they were looking for.
How many 100-acre parcels do we have?
Have quite a few parcels. The good question, probably the better question would be, which one would be suitable for that type of development?
I'd much rather use 100 acres for economic development. But anyway, gentleman from Catawba.
Mr. Chairman, with a little bit of leeway here, if I could, Mr. Mahoney, what, this is a briefing, is it possible for our board, even if it's in the evening session, for due diligence from the chairman, to add an item, have to be unanimous, that we could actually do a resolution? With respect to the May 5 meeting coming up, I think it's proper, not proper, this is the right word, but it would enhance our probabilities. Is that possible to do?
I hope so, I believe so.
Is that a definite maybe?
It's a definite maybe.
Okay. So, if it is, Mr. Chairman, of course, you're going to need consent, I would like to propose that we at least get these steps in place that our committee has diligently worked on, and try to at least get to the train track before the train is gone.
If I can get clarification from you, Mr. Mahoney, did you just not state that you need time to get the resolution together? Can you have it prepared by this evening?
We can prepare a resolution that would mimic the recommendations that Mr. Perry has provided in this PowerPoint, if that is the pleasure of the board. Yes, your policies provide for unanimous consent to add that to the agenda. The only concern I would have is, I think there's other elements involved in terms of not just retaining outside legal counsel. I think what Mr. Kaywood and I have been talking with Mr. Gates about is more finding some professional expertise that can assist us more in responding to the environmental assessment. If you remember the various items, Richard, if you can find that whole long list of what I call environmental issues, that's not so much a legal issue, that's more of trying to find people who can assist us in developing good, solid, factual issues to raise on geology and soils, and water resources, and wetlands, and land use, and socioeconomic, and air quality, and all, public safety, and all those items there, that's not so much a legal issue, that's trying to get people who can go into these environmental impact statements. I know Mr. Kaywood, in his previous life, oh my goodness, when you were doing EISs, how many, those things are like thousands of pages thick, and you need, you need people who have that expertise in those environmental areas to be able to address those points and rebut them, if necessary. And so, I, we can put together a resolution that addresses part of those issues, but I think there's another part to it, and that's why I don't want to take away anything from the county administrator, because we're going to have to come back to the board with appropriation of funds and other issues, because that, that whole, that whole process is an expensive process.
And I guess that's my concern, is, I mean, I understand where the gentleman from Catawba, where he's going, but also, I want to do it right. And, you know, we're still going to present this on May 5, but if it gives staff enough time to prepare a nice resolution with what we need in it by our first meeting in May, we still want this, when it goes to FERC, to be the right thing.
We have a May 5 deadline, but also that June 16.
Okay.
That gives us a window, it's a very narrow window, but it does give us a window to do something better.
And if I could offer one suggestion or recommendation to the board, I believe the first two recommendations are the ones that don't cost, and they're probably the most time-critical, and that would be petitioning for the additional hearing in the county and the 90-day extension on the comment period. I think there's very strong support among the Pipeline Committee for those two recommendations, and I think the resolution that would go with those would be very simple. So, if there was an action to be taken today, I would recommend it be with those two items, and we could certainly, I think the other two have more detail and nuance involved, and it would be nice, if we went to FERC, I think, if we knew we had the board's support in making, because those may be two requests I would actually make at the hearing, to have.
The board can make that, you know, that direction, and Mr. Gates and I and Richard can draft a letter for the chairman's signature that calls on not just FERC, but also all our local congressional delegation to do that.
So, from a procedure standpoint, if we want to add that to our evening session, Mr. Mahoney, where would we add that?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I would tend to think, I would suggest that the board perhaps do it after the land use rezonings, in case you have any citizens appearing there, you know, let those citizens go forward with their petitions, and maybe at the end of that.
The only thing we have tonight is our public hearing on the budget, and then citizens' comments. So, do we want to make it, would it be a public comment period? No, because we haven't advertised.
And we haven't advertised. It's a new business, I'm being public.
I think you could put it under reports and inquiries of board members.
An item for a motion? Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I concur with exactly what we're talking about, we want to get it right, but I think Richard Kaywood is right, a couple of preliminary, and David Perry, which, a couple preliminary statements would enhance our situation, or give us some sort of backup, anyway.
Okay, well, then, then I'll make, I'll go forth a motion then to add that to our agenda under item P, and that'll be a resolution as described earlier by Mr. Kaywood. I need to have a vote, I'm sorry, gentleman from Holland?
Yeah, just a clarification, I think I heard it right, but the two items were a 90-day extension and one more meeting in Roanoke County?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good.
Is there any other comment? And this needs to be a unanimous vote, correct?
No.
Thought it was to add the agenda.
Three, two. Three, two, majority vote.
Hearing, hearing, no other comments. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll to add that to item P.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pedrosian?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Any other comments for these three gentlemen? Gentlemen, David, Richard, Paul, thank you very much. Item P is new business. This was added to our agenda this afternoon. Item P1 is a resolution petitioning the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to hold an additional scoping public, additional scoping public hearing in Roanoke County, and to extend the public comment period during the scoping phase of the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project. Mr. Mahoney, our county attorney, and Richard Kaywood, our Assistant County Administrator, welcome back.
Good to be back, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the draft of the resolution that we talked about earlier today, and for those who weren't part of the earlier meeting, we have the opportunity on a week from today to go address FERC at the hearing in our region on the proposed Mountain Valley Pipeline Project, and this resolution would petition FERC to have an additional hearing specifically in Roanoke County, and also to extend the comment period by 90 days, and it would be our intention upon passage of this resolution that we deliver that message to FERC both in person at the hearing, and also petition the head of FERC, as well as our congressional delegation regarding our petition for both the hearing and the additional comment period time.
I'd like to commend these two guys. Could I have the floor?
Gentleman from Catawba.
I'm surprised, and I mean, in a pleasant way, because when I asked this during the 3 o'clock meeting at the suggestion of our, of the chairman, I wasn't sure you could get something into the works for today, so I'm really happy to see this. I think it's going to be real proactive, I think it's going to be ready for the upcoming meeting, and it's maybe not complete, but I think it's going to be a real positive step for Roanoke County. So, thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to, at this time, make a motion to adopt this resolution. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pedrosian?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.